All right, let's go ahead and get started. We're starting with the pledge and the prayer first.
致我们国家， 一个民族，
我们的天父， 我们在这里聚在一起， 我们祈祷您会指引我们， 带领我们， 我们讨论的所有事情， 我们所经历的一切， 我们如此感激生活在我们所居住的国家， 我们所居住的社区， 我们服务这些伟大的人们， 我们祈祷您会与学生们， 教授， 员工， 父母， 所有参与的人， 整个社区， 上帝， 我祈祷您会祈祷你围绕着 斯旺县学校系统， 我们正在谈论的一切， 我们正在努力做的所有事情。我们现在再次请求您和我们一起， 我们爱您。我们祈祷所有这些事情， 您神圣的灵魂，
现在我叫会议室的秩序。第一个议题是批准了计划， 主任， 我怀疑我们需要
女士麦肯尼，在 confidential agenda 我今天给你提供了所有的东西， 所以如果您能批准 confidential agenda， 我们会及时更新关于需要的地方。
好的。他们有 motion 做那个吗？
我同意 confidential agenda， 七月二十三日， 二零二一年。
第二。
好的， 我同意， 手短。motion 授权。好的， 丹尼尔·吉森。先生吉森， 请吧， 请吧。
你直接到那里的麦克风， 让每个人都可以看到。谢谢。
先生吉森， 我们 我们允许三分钟的时间， 如果您需要更多的时间， 如果您愿意记录评论， 请在那个时间段为我们做记录， 因为我们有很多问题。同时， 如果您有涉及人员的问题， 名字或者什么， 我们只能在 closed session 中进行， 所以如果您需要通知我们， 然后我们就会考虑这一点。好的，先生。
是的， 绝对的。我的名字是丹尼尔·吉森， 我已经来过这里很多次。其中一个或者第二个我来到我我 是的， 所以第一个我来到或者第二个我来到我能够让你们承认 你们只遵守了COVID restrictions 规定， 由于政府的压力， 或者实际上 governor， 我相信你们可以回忆起来去回顾一下。几天前， 拜登决定他想下达一个 executive order 关于疫苗的 mandate。所以我的问题是， 你们要对孩子们颁发疫苗谕令吗？ 这是你们讨论过的吗？
没有， 我们只是在讨论我们的 agenda， 看看这个。
好的。嗯， 我的女儿在一年级， 我当时在看她的 syllabus 关于其他选择与不同的 criteria 的 和一些她们可能在教学中提到的其他东西， 就是社区多样性， 以及所有这些。我至今还没有与她的老师谈论这些实际上意味着什么。我只是想确保我们不是在学校里在教学任何种族理论的时候因为 我想说，当你把它分析清楚时， 那就是种族面具。我想确保我们这里的所有人和正在听的人 都会做他们的研究， 并且关注这些东西。这很恶心， 而且与上帝对立。社区， 圣经的保护下， 我想保持这一点。你知道， 作为家长， 你知道， 作为一个绅士， 你知道， 我相信一些东西， 你知道， 家族， 枪是其中一种。所以我想尽可能保护这些， 并且我感到 我必须向你们表示歉意， 并且在 behalf of that 上 你知道， 我非常支持 COVID， 但我并不认为应该被颁颁。我不知道这对你资金的影响是什么， 至于站起来说， 不，我们不会颁颁。如果你失去资金， 我会阻止我的孩子， 否则我会允许我的孩子 vaccinated。我相信有很多其他家长愿意做同样的事情。如果你没有孩子教书， 那么你们在这里没有意义。如果你没有孩子， 你没有资金， 一种方式或者另一种方式。所以你会不得不面对愤怒的父母， 或者愤怒的 governor 或者政府。在我看来， 因为， 就像我说的，我会阻止我的孩子， 如果发生了。我注意到他们有新的 oral supplement。我知道， 我听说传言， 这些是传言， 我们没有， 所以我不能确认。我知道有一些我读过的资料， 我们有其他学校 给孩子们注射疫苗， 而不让父母知道， 在其他州，
是的，
其他地区。是的，
是的。
好的。
谢谢。最后一个我们 我认为已经签了名的，
这是 在公共评论， 是的， 那个文件在三十分钟之前就出来了， 正如 board policy 提供的。
好的。好的， 主任， 如果您愿意， 让我们进入讨论会议。
我相信我们有女士柯克林关于县中的数字。
好的， 女士艾利森。
晚上好， 你怎么样？
很好。
我们通常每年呈现的图表之前， 自从二月二十二日， 有 1,801 个 COVID+ 19 案例。截至目前， 让我回去， 1,801 个。当前 active cases 是97 个。我们有 23 个死亡自从二月二十二日。有19 个死亡， 所以我们有三个额外的死亡自从八月二十四日。与当前 active cases 有97 个， 年龄为零到四的有 2 个， 五到十七岁的有 18 个， 十八岁的是 1 个， 十九岁到二十五岁是 5 个， 二十六岁到三十五岁是 23 个， 三十六岁到四十九岁是 20 个， 五十岁到六十四岁是 21 个， 六十岁以上的有 7 个。过去三十天， 在斯旺县有 335个 COVID+ 案例。
过去三十天。
在过去三十天。有时候人们会认为有些人认为 你知道， 我们只有 90 些病例， 或者 100 个病例， 我们做得很好。我不是说我们不是， 但是你必须记住， 那些病例消失， 新的病例出现。所以过去三十天， 有335 个。你有什么问题吗？
我们与周围的县相比， 你知道吗？
我相信， 我不能诚实回答这个问题， 但我相信我们的数字 比其他县的数字更低， 因为我看了 查尔斯郡， 杰克逊郡， 当然， 哈伍德郡， 他们有更多 positive cases 的病例， 截至目前。但是它们是更大的县。
罗宾斯郡是 有点小，
有点小。
但数量远远多。
他们的数字 unfortunately 正在上升。他们现在在格兰郡有19或20 个死亡。我想仅此而已， 仅此而已， 仅此而已， 我刚刚和贝斯·洛维特 一起谈话， 她是在 CDC HHS 在九月二日和她交谈。我们之前进行了几次谈话， 因为我们 COVID vaccine 率在 dashboard 上一直是稍微低的， 在我看来。所以我一直关注它， 事实上， 它确实如此。它显示了大约 35% 的完全 vaccinated 在斯旺县。问题在于， 他们说的是一个联邦漏洞， 在 quala 四边线上的疫苗注射。很多那些所以那占了大约 10%。所以斯旺县我们有 45% 的完全 vaccinated。所以我想提醒你关于这个。
还有问题吗？
你有数据表明那些阳性的人是否 vaccinated 还是无 vaccinated 吗？
我不确定。我知道这是一个很小的数字。Zack Moore， 他是 epidemiologist， 他说无 vaccinated 是两倍以上更 likely to be reinfected 的非 vaccinated 人。但我希望说， 大概在 97到100 正常值之间， 我可以说大概有 10 个。毫无疑问。我可以明天查看那个数字， 然后发送邮件。我会发给马克。
你有其他的信息吗？
booster shots， 是的， 我有。这是 immunocompromised individuals 的。我们只有 Moderna， 所以这是我们 health department 出的。booster shots 理论上会在 September 结束。这仍然没有 FDA 授权。而且它们还在大约六个月或八个半月后开始注射。所以我们只是等待 FDA、CDC 到州的信息然后从那里继续。
所以 booster shot， 如果你以前注射 Moderna， 你可以只注射 Moderna
correct。
和 Pfizer 同样。
是的。
我注意到， 我想在 North Carolina 现在只有两个县还在禁止佩戴口罩。查尔斯郡和格兰郡， 因为他们遭受了后果， 就是他们所做的 事实上， 他们被迫佩戴口罩， 他们他们并没有开始在格兰郡佩戴。
我不确定。
但只有两个县。
他们只有两周， 我想。
学校系统？
是的。
今天开始。
好的。
但我相信， 女士麦肯尼， 他们今天开始了口罩 mandate。
他们今天开始了。
那是我的理解， 是的。
那是我听到的， 我理解。
回到 booster shot， 一旦这个决定被 finalize， 无论它是什么， 如果我们如果我们下达 booster shot 的指示， 我想它可能会再次处于阶段， 就像以前一样， 然后我们会通过这些阶段。然后我会和马克和学校人员沟通。
有没有变化？ 年龄注射。
For Pfizer， 是12 和以上。Moderna 是18 和以上。他们于 June 送了 approval 对 Moderna， 对于 12到17 的， 但是它还没有被批准。
好的。
还有吗？
谢谢。
谢谢。
女士麦肯尼， 如果我们把我们的数字追溯到 August 15 日， 也就是我们第一天在学校， 我们看到 385 个学生通过 有症状， 近距离接触， 需要他们那385 个， 我们看到我们看到截止昨天晚上 36个实际上测试阳性。所以 只是用我的简单数学， 记得我是音乐教师， 不是数学教师。现在学生有 11% 的 positive， 对于学生。对于 staff， 我们看到截止昨天晚上 44个通过有症状或者需要他们 近距离接触， 需要他们被隔离。但是从那中， 我们看到了 11个 positive， 总共。我们有一个不同的 rate 与我们成年人不同。那些只是纯数量。好吧。那些数据， 也是通过 email， 以便你们可以有。
然后死亡率是 100%， 正确吗？
没有。
在那些老师和学生身上， 对吗？
死亡率是零。
或者零， 对不起。是的。
是的。
是的。好。
是的。我的心跳加速。
和 hospitalization， 我不知道我们有没有。
我没有答案。我不知道。现在， 最近发生的事情是， 因为 Senate Bill 654被 governor批准颁布， 它现在是 state law 2021-130。学校 board 由每个 district 重新审视他们的 mask 期望 monthly。一个是使用我们上次会议时通过的 motion。当然， 但我们允许这是我们的政策。“政策”这个词在法律中 有点误导。它不需要是一个正式化的政策， 这是 according to Campbell Shatley， 这也是 North Carolina School Board Association 那周发的建议。学校 board Association 发出了一些 例子， 你可以从它中工作， 或者我们可以从它中工作， 到那一步。我包括了你的信息， 一个我们上次会议时通过的 motion 的一份复制。我也给你发了一份 North Carolina School Board Association 政策建议， 如果您选择使用它。任何政策， 它是真正的正式化的政策， 你可以按照你想的方式调整。所以我相信这将是讨论如何这个 board 想向前走的一个好点子。现在， 如果您决定您想使用 政策， 我意思是， excuse me， 您去年制定的 motion， 我想提醒你， 我们 agreed 要关注正在举行。有几条原因。一个是因为热， 我们一直担心。另一个是因为所以您允许我们不强制 outdoor 面试直到我们能来这里 indoor， 您在 last month 的 motion 里声明了如果他们站在 sidelines， 如果他们站在 sidelines， 如果他们积极参与， 他们不需要戴面罩。我也要求您允许我们有一个 recovery 期， 一个短暂的 recovery 期， 以便于某人 从， 比如说篮球场离开， 可以有机会没有口罩呼吸。现在， 作为 board， 我需要你指导我应该往哪个方向走。您想使用我们过去的 motion， 还是您想使用一个新的政策？ 这取决于您。
大家有意见吗？
我想知道 老师， 老师们， 谁， 或者从你或者只是描述一下 它的发展情况，
我觉得， 恐怕， 女士卡普纳， 最好我们让我们的 administrators 讲述， 因为他们是行动最接近的。所以我们的 administrators 想要来谈谈吗？ 每个人都来一次。还是你想我来谈谈？ 来， 蒂姆。请。
这需要很长时间。
当然， 有困难， 而且 不是很容易， 但是只是看看它是否真的持续进行。
所以其他班主任都想听我说话， 所以我可以为所有人发言。好的， 所以
我觉得女士卡普纳应该问。
好的。
问题就是先生塞尔问我们我们对使用旧口罩在 August 时实施的与否 有任何变化， 或者 whatever， 就是 你知道， 我们试图找出什么在实施中有效。我觉得需要改变或者修改。
好吧， 我对 outside 学生的口罩感兴趣。我们遇到了我们让学生 outside 的情况。我们担心与同学接触的能力。所以我们让整个班级穿着口罩 outside， 即使他们在进行 physical activity。这是我的 concern。你知道， 我们大部分时间都在 跟踪我们的学生， 和类似的事情。但是口罩在学校的时 候， 当学生 outside 的时候。你知道， 我也有一些担心它的一致性。你知道， 我们学生每天穿着口罩在学校日。然后他们去运动。然后 你知道， 它不一样。所以我有父母询问过。而且我不是说 它需要改变， 只是 你知道， 他们质疑了一致性问题。
一致性是指 使用口罩？
是的， 对于 outdoor activity。我只是诚实地说， 我担心 indoor 活动。向前。
蒂姆， 你对 indoor
比如篮球， basketball， spectators。
所以你可以更描述一下
我只是， 你知道， 我想我们在学校。我的第一 concern 是 我们是在学校， 我们每天与学生 隔离， 与其他学生或者家庭成员密切接触。我的主要 concern 是我们的学生在 person 学习。因为我想我们每个人都经历了我们有教师在面对你 你知道， 有一次， 可能上周我们有 40 些学生在隔离。你知道， 你怎么服务这些学生， 当你 你知道， 你在尝试给你的学生在 person 的最好的教育。所以 best education possible to your students in person? So my goal is to keep everybody, as many of our students inside of the building as possible to give them the best education possible, whatever that means.
So, one of the difficulties is that in order for us to not necessarily eliminate, but minimize the potential of quarantine is for both students who are involved in a close contact to have on a mask. Indoors during class, that's one thing, and you, in your motion, gave the opportunity for students to take mask breaks. Our teachers, in almost every case, are very conscientious about that because of what Mr. Kerr just said. They want their students to be in the classroom, and quarantine eliminates that opportunity. However, there is a concern with masks outdoors for students because of the physical activity piece of it. I gave permission to our principals for students to not wear masks while they are actively involved outside as long as they are moving at above a walking pace. Moving at a walking pace provides very little air movement to disrupt respiratory droplets.
They'd be outside.
Sir, you had your chance, please deny interrupt our meeting.
At that point, at a walking pace, or if they stop and cloister together, they need to have their masks on because of the potential for close contact and quarantine. I believe that fell within the limits of the motion that was made at the last meeting. Sometimes our teachers have been so concerned that they have encouraged strongly that students wear masks outside all the time. I tried to eliminate that, that concern. I think that you heard that, that Mr. Kerr is, shares that concern that we keep our students in the classroom.
Can I add something else?
I wish that you would, thank you.
I mean, you know, every, every minute we're looking at our students placement at lunch in the classrooms, trying to determine if our students have been with their masks off around somebody else for 15 cumulative minutes within six feet. That's my life now. Because that is, that is the requirement from the state, is that a student that is within 15 or within six feet for 15 cumulative minutes within 24 hours has to go home and quarantine because he is, he or she is considered a close contact if they don't have a mask on. So that is my only concern, is that our students stay in school.
So, Mr. Kerr, do you have any stats on the 46 that were out on quarantine? Do you have a number of those that were at home because of symptoms or at home because of not wearing a mask or not having a mask on at the time?
The majority, I can't, I can't tell you a hard and fast statistic, but I can tell you that I know for a fact the majority of them were home because they were deemed a close contact at places like lunch.
Okay. Got you. So most of them were symptomless, but it was because of the mask guidance?
Correct.
Or not the mask guidance, the quarantine guidance?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think, I don't, I think that we should be careful to say they were symptomless because there is a percentage of the students that have been sent home because of symptoms.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted that information. So if we can somehow capture that, that would be great to have.
We have that in our tracking form, and I can, I can give you some numbers on that, but not.
100%?
Not, not 100% detail.
Mr. Sell, Lee Tommy knows.
Just the 24 about contact.
You need to come, you need to come up here because I can't hear with that fan on.
It's about four, it's a little bit more than four and a half to one, close contact to student positive. Every student positive we had has led to four and a half to five and somewhere in that, that's pretty close.
So probably eight to 10 out of those 46 were.
Yeah, we, we've not had, it's, it's, that's pretty close. But whenever, some of them have been more than others naturally, but to put it at an average, it'd be between four and a half to five.
And the problem is obviously we had a positive of quarantine, so.
Yeah. And, and it, and it's not like that people aren't doing their best on this stuff either. I mean, when we, we have them sitting in lunchrooms, and my son was a close contact because he sat at the lunchroom table with a positive. And so he was a close contact and we had to spend some time out. But it's unfortunately just the world that we live in. I mean, you can't be masked and eat. And so even though we're doing the best we can, sometimes it just happens. And, and I appreciate the diligence of our staff, I've got to say that because they've stayed after it. I drove a bus today and I'm sitting up front with a mask on and telling kids to, you know, sit down on your tail ends for me folks and put your mask on, you know, and, and they'll have them pulled down, you just have to stay after it. But it's just something else we have to pay attention to. It's just where we're at.
Yeah, I'd like to thank them for the effort for the contract tracing because I'm sure that's a.
Thankfully, the nurses are taking care of the vast majority of that, and they've done a fantastic job and they've stayed on top of it. And, but it's just one of those things that we've gotten where we check on it every day. It's just part of what we do.
Thank you. Any other, you know, this is not, I don't have a database, I can go on to make this truly factual, except, except just coincidentally, the two counties here that did not enforce a mask are the two counties that had closed schools and had some serious problems. Even a child, I understand in Grand County, I think died. That's the last thing we want to have to do is close schools or have a child injured. And the only, one of the questions I had from a parent was about, of course, we don't enforce the mask when they're playing outdoors and outdoor sports and soccer and in football. And if we'd had a, a mask enforcement at either of those two sports when they played, we'd have some more serious problems. So we can't do that. They can't play that kind of, in that type of heat with a mask. So it's a reasonable decision. And I do cringe every ballgame I go to and there's not masks, especially in the volleyball setting. But we're doing the best we can, and it seems to be working. As Allison probably first tell you, that may change this time next week with Allison, but, but she's, we're forcing it. We don't do anything without consulting with her and getting professional advice, and we appreciate her advice that she gives us and the specifics she gives us that helps us. So I'm comfortable with standing where we are. It's, and I think everybody in here knows, it's our decision, it's nobody else's decision. That's state law, each county. And, and as, at present, in the state of North Carolina, and we've got 100 counties, I think, still, there's only two counties that aren't enforcing the mask. And the two that in this region that were best known that did are backing up and down finding that it was a mistake. And I think I can speak for this board. Our goal is, of course, again, as soon as we see some daylight in, in the COVID figures and we feel our kids are safe, then we're going to act accordingly. Nobody wants to wear a mask. I don't want to wear them, and I don't know if anybody wants to. But we've got to do what we can to protect kids, and that's what it's about, and our faculty, and keep our schools open and our extracurricular open. The band's the same way. They do the same procedure, and, and it's working, and let's hopefully it keeps working. Any other question or comment? We'll come back and, that's on the agenda, I think, for.
Yeah, I guess I have some questions about spectators, like in the gymnasium indoors, and kind of if there's any news, information about, about that, like how many people show up at volleyball games or, or indoors that are spectators? I don't know, just trying to figure out. I've had several parents concerned about that, that masks are not being enforced inside in those settings.
Can I say something briefly about that? Because I'm at every, I've been to every volleyball game except tonight, keep the clock. And I've talked to Mark about it. And, and there is an emphasis to trying to get masks, but a lot of these folks are getting up in the top of the gym, up in the lavators, the top seats, and a lot of them are family groups, and then they'll take their mask off, maybe and sit there. And then one thing that they did was they had visitors when they came in. That concerned me too because they were all trying to go over there and you had more people. So they're now on the visitor side, and that kind of spread that out. And it's about 50/50, those that do and don't. I don't know what else to do on that myself, and Mark and I talked that a little bit. He can explain that further.
Well.
I mean, I understand it's an enforcement issue, but, but, you know.
Well, if, if, you know, if as the board you decide that you want spectators for indoor events to wear a mask, then we'll, we'll be bound to enforce that. That's going to be difficult and could become contentious, and it concerns me putting my staff involved in telling people that. Now, what I do know is that as we've opened up the visitor side of the gym for volleyball, that people have been very willing to sit on that side and to spread out. Would they be that willing to put a mask on and, in, in an indoor event? I don't know. We would, we would do our best to enforce that, but if a person refuses, we really only have one option, and that is to ask them to leave. And at that point, the only way that we could enforce that, the only way that I would ask my staff to do that is to have law enforcement ask them to leave because at that point they'd be trespassing. Those are the only options I see.
I mean, I guess with, and this is just from past experience, it seems that the gym becomes more full when basketball season starts because there's more, there's more teams, more things. So I think we just have to keep an eye on it, that if there's more people in there, then it may come to the point if there's no ability to spread out. Are there announcements made to stay, you know, distance apart and please wear a mask? Or is there anything going on?
There have not been at the indoor events. I've asked that they be made at the football games, but they've only been announced at the beginning and not during the game itself. And I think that you're, perhaps you're looking at two different ideas between an indoor venue and an outdoor venue, depending upon your perspective, I think. We can certainly increase that, and as I said, Kim, if you want us to enforce a mask mandate for all indoor events, we can do that.
I mean, our goal is not to put any more burden on the staff than we have to. I mean, that's, I understand that. But our job is also to protect our students and our staff. And if it gets to the point where that's going to be an impossibility, then I think we have to be able to act to do that. And if numbers start going up in the community, and those are the community members that are coming into our facilities, I think we've got to consider those options.
Now, you, you'll revisit this every month, and you can revisit this, this policy more often than that if you choose, and at that point you can change that. I know that Jackson County put a, an indoor mask mandate in place for everything. You have the authority to do that. We'll do what you tell us to do. Anything else? You'll have to decide at some point, Mr. McKinney, how, and it doesn't necessarily have to be now, but there, there'll have to be some type of a movement by the board this evening according to state law.
Right. It's my understanding on, on the volleyball team that, and I know the varsity, and you might know the middle school, but I know on the varsity, I think it's 97% that have been vaccinated, which gives you a little. Mark Carpenter.
I know that, I know that today we've been dealing with an athletic concern, and one of the things that is allowing us to continue to move forward with that sport is the fact that the students who have been involved in that are vaccinated. Now, that doesn't mean that every student on the team's vaccinated, and I'm not going to ask for you to make a movement in that direction because I don't know that you can. And that's another point that probably we ought to make. I know that there is some concern right now nationwide about vaccine mandates. There are no vaccine mandates right now. Okay? And I would encourage us to wait until we get direction on that from our government and from our legal counsel before we take any steps. Okay? Of course, you can do whatever you want within the bounds of the law.
Yeah, I only mentioned that because the parents I've talked to, and one of them is my granddaughter, and the other parents that I've talked to seem to have a sense of relief and, and a little bit more safety, and I'm not as concerned now because of that fact. And that, and that makes me feel a little better about the team itself in that I'm not that worried about them getting serious consequences from the COVID rather than if they didn't have the vaccine. So that is a good, piece of good evidence or information, and that, hopefully that'll keep up. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to.
To.
Bonus?
Bonus. Whenever the federal government provided for the, the school, public school systems an opportunity to have additional funding because of the pandemic, it has come in about three waves. The first wave was to get us through the last school year in a lot of ways. The second wave and the third wave have been more for this year and for the next couple of two or three years. Those are called ESER 2 and ESER 3. We were required to develop a budget for both, although we only had a limited number of days to put that budget together. The, the great thing about it is we also have the opportunity to do budget amendments. As I began to pay attention to what other school systems are doing with ESER money, I began to notice that some of them were using them as retention and appreciation bonuses. And so I made a decision to ask Stephanie to put together a plan that would allow us to use a portion of our ESER funding to provide a bonus for every permanent employee in Swain County schools. My intent, with your approval, is to provide a $1,000 bonus for each permanent employee in two stages. One would be a fall bonus and one would be a spring bonus. I've given to you the bonus plan in your information. That bonus plan is really quite simple. It says that if a person is employed in the Swain County school system by September 1st and is still employed by October 1st, they'll receive a $500 bonus in November. We had to put some dates on that in order to make that fit into the budget and pay cycle. And if a person is employed by December 1st and is still employed by March 1st, they'll receive a $500 bonus as well. And if a person is employed through both of those, they'll receive both bonuses. I'd like for Ms. Treadway to come and to explain to you how that fits into the ESER budgeting just a little bit because it's required some amendments.
Yeah.
So Stephanie, if you would come and do that, please.
Good evening. So the, the bonus piece of that will be, we're proposing to pay out of ESER 3. That is our largest allocation thus far. ESER 3, we're to receive $3,195,195. As Mr. Sell said, most of our federal money, every year, we have to submit an expenditure plan that gives the details of what, how we plan to use the money as well as a budget. When we did this budget last year, we went ahead and submitted it at the end of the year so that we could get the funding that we needed in order to do our extended summer learning program. However, we had to resubmit it again at the beginning of this year. When we went to resubmit this year, DPI decided that they were only going to release 67% of the funding. So it looks like on your sheet there that we have $1 million less, but we will be getting that, that additional funding. It's just that we have to budget right now that we had to budget $2,140,000. But of that $2,140,000, on the plan, we showed the estimated cost of the bonus will be about $400,000. That is if we have to pay retirement on that bonus. But I do believe that there's an exception for a thank you or a retention bonus through the North Carolina retirement system that we won't have to pay that bonus. And if we don't, it'll be somewhere in, more in the neighborhood of about $300,000. In the budget here, I factored in not having to pay retirement on that, but I wanted to make sure we had it in the plan just in case we do have to pay it. On here, there, I've shown the differences in what we had submitted in 2021 versus what we submitted in 2122 budget year. And the majority of that change is for the bonus. There's also some increased cost just because once we got some of the positions that we had budgeted in here, just based on the actual salaries, based on certified payroll for those individuals, and then also based on the estimated retirement cost expense for the year. We haven't gotten, of course, a state budget yet, and we don't know the exact retirement percentage. However, they gave us an estimated amount to use. So I've went ahead and included that in all these budget figures. So for ESER 3, once again, the, where we took the majority of the difference from was out of our HVAC facilities, out of our capital piece, because we had just put in to that the remainder of what we had not really budgeted because we weren't sure, number one, what the cost of those capital projects would be. And so we just used that to take it out of. So we took out of that line item the $1 million that we've not yet received in the funding, and then also about $332,000 to cover the increased cost for the bonus and the retirement. Also, our indirect cost rate was increased for this year, and so indirect cost increased as well, about $37,000. That's money that does come back to the district. So Mr. Sell also wanted me to go ahead and talk to you about ESER 2, which is the PRC 171. That budget for 2122 is $1,389,998.11. The difference between what we budgeted last year and this year is $36,441, and that's because we spent that right before the end of the fiscal year last year. The majority of the changes there are for the retirement rate increase and the health insurance expense, also the indirect cost rate. With the increase in the indirect cost rate, that line item went up about $17,700. The other items were the changes that, based on actuals from our extended summer learning program, and those have been reflected in the new budget. Any questions?
It's only, is that a two-year thing, ESER? Or is that four years?
So ESER 2 must be spent by the end of '23, and then ESER 3 would be the end of '24. So each one is, has a different liquidation period. We do have some extra funds that'll, will be at the end of '22, though.
What's the matter, Kim?
I just had a message from a parent that said they can hardly hear on the YouTube link. My mic's wrong.
Any questions for Stephanie? Just so that everyone doesn't think that I'm just trying to give myself a bonus, there is one person in Swain County that won't get it, and that's me. And that's because in my contract, I'm not allowed to have bonuses. And that's the way I want it. So this, these bonuses would go to every employee, bus driver, cafeteria staff, teacher, principal, central office staff. It'll be equal across the board.
Correct.
That's my desire anyhow.
They've all been under the same strain here.
They have.
Everybody's been working under the same strain.
And, and it's, we're noticing that strain in a lot of different places, and we've had to replace quite a few positions because of that, and perhaps this will help people want to stay a little bit more, for a little bit longer. Any questions?
How many bus drivers are you still short?
That depends on the day.
We had, get Tommy to drive, where?
Tommy had to drive this afternoon. We, we had, we had six drivers out this afternoon. And we'll be, we'll be looking at some of the same things tomorrow. Questions or thoughts? One of the reasons, or one of the things that we're, we're able to do with the ESER funding is to bring a. is to bring a group in to look at our facilities. We've talked about this before, and we agreed that Novus would be the company that we would work with. That when you voted to approve of that, you did not vote to approve funding prices. And so Novus has put together two proposals for us. The first proposal, the reason this is broken out into two is because we asked them to do something that was not in our original plan, and they couldn't fit it in underneath the cap that I gave to them. Okay? So the first proposal is for them to come in and look at all of our facilities and determine what our maintenance and capital improvement needs are. And the wording for Part A reflects the expectations of ESER 3 spending. The second piece is for them to come in and look at the environmental pieces to determine if we have environmental concerns that we need to address through air movement, water control, and things like that. Both of those, Part A and Part B, come in right at $100,000, which was their cap. Now, Part C, we had asked them to go and look at the property above the high school, that 40-some-plus acres, and to provide some guidance on what we could and should do with that perhaps in the future. They were not able to fit that in to the $100,000 cap. That will cost another $22,000. I would need for you to approve those tonight if you want to do them. In a few minutes, you're going to find that our Alarca property is ready to sell at over $55,000. And if you chose, you could perhaps instruct us to use some of that money for that planning above the high school. Of course, that's all up to you, but that funding is there if you want to use it for that. Do y'all have any questions about those facilities assessments or the studies? They have both been vetted by our lawyers, and wording has been adjusted accordingly.
Any questions?
Are you prepared to move on? I know this is a lot of information.
Oh, it is? Is it, yeah?
We're going to begin to use, I would like to begin to use, something called the Consent Agenda. And the pieces that are in the Consent Agenda are items which will very likely have a unanimous vote and don't need a lot of time spent on them. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes the Alarca property purchase. We've gone through the appropriate process according to law of bidding. Anne Sontimer has been our highest bidder at $55,711.55. That purchase by her needs to be approved by the board tonight, if you would. We need to adjust our calendar. The reason we need to adjust our calendar is because the same law that is requiring you to vote on the mask every month also has taken away our opportunity to use remote learning days at the same frequency as we had in the past. And so we rebuilt the calendar a little bit, kept many of the days the same, but have called them some different names. There'll be teacher work days rather than remote learning days. We have also absorbed some days back into regular instruction. You have that calendar in front of you, and I'd be pleased to ask or to answer any questions that you have about that. Also, I'm also going to ask for you all to endorse My Future NC. That's an organization that's nonprofit, and their goal is to support the fact that we have about 1.4 million adults who are currently in possession of high-quality credentials and/or degrees. And according to their study, they are saying that within the next 15 or 20 years, we need to have at least 2 million people at that same level. They work to support school systems and other organizations towards that goal. They have asked that we endorse their work. I know the people that are on that organization, and I know who they are directed by. I believe that it is a quality group, and I've sent you quite a good of information on that today. So I would ask that you would endorse them. And then, of course, the last thing are the meeting minutes, and I would ask that you approve those as well. So for those Consent Agenda, do you have any question or any concerns or anything that you'd like to discuss? And if you choose to pull any of those items off of the Consent Agenda and vote on them individually, as a board, all you have to do is recommend that and have a second, and it can be pulled off.
I just have a question about the property bid.
Yes.
Do we have to sign, vote on a resolution to accept this offer?
We have, haven't we already agreed through a resolution to sell the property?
Okay. I didn't remember signing that resolution.
Yes, we did. Now, if you want to wait to vote on this until you can see that, I'd be happy, but I didn't bring that with me.
No, sir.
Do we need, we can explain that further. I get it. For anybody that doesn't know, the Alarca property has been in the, been under the school board for, I don't know how long it's been up there, back in the '30s at least. And it was above the Alarca school, and it was their watershed. Problem was that there was no access for us to get to it. It's surrounded by a property, and it's up on top of the mountain. So for years, it's sat there, and we have no use for it, and it's landlocked. Now, the people around it could use it, and that's, we finally decided to open it for bids, and that's the reason we're getting rid of it. It's not that we don't need property, but we can't get to the property, so we don't need anything that we can't use. And we're fortunate that the people around it can use it, and that improved the bids. For you and I, it would've been useless because you can't use property if you can't access it. Any questions on that? So we are getting rid of it, and hopefully, if we all agree, then I think we can use that money to start on that process of looking above the fail house for a future track.
The other piece about that, Mr. McKinney, also, is that it puts that piece of property back into the taxable limit base.
Yes.
So it's a benefit, although it's not a huge benefit, it is a benefit for the county as well.
Okay. We won't go into executive session. If we do, I need a motion.
I move Swain County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is previous confidential or not of public record or North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, vouch of hands. We'll be back in some point in time. All right, let's go back to action items. Mr. Sale, if you would, please.
We need to move with personnel items first. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Tiffany Taylor as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective August 10, 2021.
All right, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. All right, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Ryan McMahon as the varsity boys' assistant basketball coach at Swain High School effective August 9, 2021. Notice that's just as the assistant basketball coach.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Rita Fisher as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective August 16, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
All right, end discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
The next one we have to put into effect, even though Mr. McMahon, Chris McMahon, chose not to come to work. We offered him the job, you voted to give him the job, he said, "I'm not coming." Okay?
All right.
So I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Chris McMahon as custodian at Swain High School effective August 9, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of April Edwards as cafeteria assistant at Swain High School effective August 31, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, end discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Tenny Brown as payroll coordinator at the central office effective October 31, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
On your confidential agenda, do you have Tammy Moore listed?
Yes.
She was a late addition today. I wanted to make sure you had her there. And the reason I'm asking, I would like to recommend all of these cafeteria employees at the same time, if that's appropriate with you.
Can be fine.
Okay? I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ all of the cafeteria workers as listed and with the effective employment dates as listed on your agenda.
May I ask a question?
Let's have a motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, let's go.
Just the one on Item 7D. Is that, are we just waiting on something like a background check or?
Mr. Dills, there's an effective date to be determined for April Dykes. Is that appropriate with you, or do we need to back up and do this differently?
I think we would just have to do that saying pending background check.
Pending background check.
Yeah.
Okay, is that understood? Everybody, that's part of, who made the motion?
I did.
You included that in the motion in the second, what was that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I was hoping to do all the rest of them in groups as well, but it looks like we may need to do each one individually. So hang on, here we go. Okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Colby Hyatt as basketball JV boys' head coach at Swain High School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Ray Smith as basketball varsity boys' assistant coach at Swain High School.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Alicia Smith, that's Kelly Smith for most of you.
Okay.
As volleyball JV girls' assistant coach at Swain High School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Tyler Shuler as baseball varsity head coach at Swain High School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. All right, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jimmy Montieth as baseball varsity assistant coach at Swain High School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands.
It's missing a name, and I can tell you who it's supposed to be, and it would be Aaron Smiley.
Okay.
Okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Aaron Smiley as football JV assistant coach at Swain High School.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Derek Ledford as basketball varsity girls' assistant coach at Swain High School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Michelle Hicks as basketball girls' head coach at Swain Middle School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion carried.
I has removed his name from the recommendations.
Okay.
So we go to J. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Cabot Cochran as baseball assistant coach at Swain Middle School.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Leah Jackson as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective August 23, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deborah Taylor as reading specialist at Swain Middle School effective August 23, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kayla Kirkland as parents' as teacher coordinator at Swain County Schools effective September 7, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. All right.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Rebecca Bridges as reading assistant at Swain East Elementary effective September 15, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Robert Brown as bus monitor at Swain East Elementary effective August 30, 2021. This is in addition to his duties as teacher assistant, or as, no, excuse me, as a behavioral assistant.
Motion.
Second.
All right, end discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Myra Smith as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective September 20, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I need to add one more. It's not on your list. I don't think that anyone would mind. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kevin Jones as a custodian at West Elementary effective September 13.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Tammy Moore as after-school tutor substitute effective August 16, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, end discussion. All right, those in favor? Vouch of hands? All right, motion's carried, or approved.
You're gonna need some...
I'm going...
After this.
I'll make some water, if you want. Go ahead.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Lydia Sale as after-school teacher at Swain West Elementary effective September 1, 2021. She's my daughter, and I didn't know she was doing this.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
And now she can pay some rent. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Whitney Davis as after-school teacher at Swain East Elementary effective September 1, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, end discussion. All those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Tiffany Walker as after-school teacher at Swain West Elementary effective September 1, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
If you don't have the updated confidential agenda, you won't have these on there. I recommend Ashley West as after-school teacher at Swain High School effective September 1, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. All right.
I recommend Angela Barnes as after-school teacher at Swain High School effective September 1, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion carried.
I recommend Michael Turner as after-school administrative leave, lead, excuse me, at Swain High School effective September 1, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
End discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
Those are all of our personnel. I know. Would like for you to please tell me your preference for the mask mandate, and this will need to be in some form of a motion that is to be revisited each month. And if, when you revisit this in the month of, what is this, September?
September.
Of October, you can just say we choose to leave it the same and vote from there, if that's what you want to do. But we should restate it tonight somehow. Okay? But we should restate it tonight somehow, okay?
I make a motion that we continue with the mask mandate as written with the amendment that we would not enforce the mask mandate for outdoor extracurricular activities.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
End of discussion.
I just, do we need to say, I think the discussion was about if they were, and some activity in the outdoor extracurricular, that it would not be required.
I need for you to say that again, please, ma'am, because I was writing.
The question I have is, was it discussion that if they were outdoor extracurricular, but with the extra, if they were moving, they did not, the mask would not be required, but if they were not in a movement setting, did I, I'm just trying to understand exactly what that means, outdoor extracurricular.
It's just the big difference between PE and outdoor activities.
I think we're talking about almost three different things, okay? Cody's motion was for all extracurricular activities regardless of the level of activity. That's the way it was stated.
Outdoor.
And I was just confirming, was that, is that what that meant?
And what you're, what you are wondering about is, does that mean if they're moving, if they're actively engaged? And that, I think that's a discussion that probably, that you all need to have. I don't think that PE, Travis, is included in this motion because that's not an extracurricular. And that's, and that's a point of delineation. Extracurricular is by choice, PE is a requirement. Now, if you want to say something about PE, that's fine. I'm just, I'm writing down what you say, so I think that perhaps the discussion needs to be for clarification, if you want to, on that.
And that's fine, if we want to clarify that.
If you want, so you're willing to, you're wanting to add to your motion then, that as long as the extracurricular participant is physically active, is active, they do not have to wear a mask.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And who seconded that motion? You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to buy a parliamentarian and have them sitting here.
Now, I think I would caution the one thing, I think we have to understand that like in soccer and in football, when they come off the field and you've got a substitute, they're gonna come off that field breathing deep and exhausted. So, I think we have to understand there is a reasonable time.
Recovery time.
That they actually calm down and they, then put, I wouldn't want to put a mask on as soon as they come out. Because, you know, watching the games that I've watched so far, some of them collapse that quick because a lot of energy, both of those two. That's the only comment I would have on that. That, you added that to your motion then?
When I was, yeah, that's.
It's hard to worry, dude.
If you don't, that's fine. I just want, I was just understanding, so we'll know how everybody understands.
That they're standing on the field, outside on the sidelines, and they're not playing if they have a mask.
I need, I need to, I need to represent a thought there, okay? And here's, you, go ahead, Cody, because you may.
I think that the, my anticipation is that it was, the motion was made with the amendment for outdoor extracurricular events.
Right.
Now, for that specifically, I don't think there's a delineation there. If it's an outdoor extracurricular event, that our anticipation on that was the difficulty of mask management, the mask control, what do we do with them? Where do we put the masks? What do we do, all of that? Specifically with the outdoor events, the number of players, be it football, be it soccer, be it any of the outdoor events, ban, marching ban, anything like that, it's just hard to keep track of the mask. So, what we're trying to do is model our current mask mandate to make the amendment that those individuals who are engaged in these outdoor extracurricular activities are not required to wear the mask, whether in active engagement or not. Now, our, our active engagement portion and recovering, we talked about with our indoor sports, that if we're playing basketball or volleyball, that while you're actively engaged in the athletic event on the field of play or recovering, you're not subject to the mask mandate. However, once you have recovered and you are there, sitting on there, then the mask mandate goes back into effect. I know, that's not, that's what I, that's my intent behind the motion, if that's a little more clear, but if you are engaged in an outdoor extracurricular activity, you are not subject to the mask mandate. Does that, a little bit?
That removes the while physically active component.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that is, that is actually your intent?
Yes.
With the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay. Does that clarify?
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, vouch of hands. All right, motion carried.
I would recommend then that the Board of Education approve the SER 2 and SER 3 amended budgets, including the retention and depreciation bonus structure. That's $1,000 for each permanent employee based on that, that model that I gave you.
I'll make that motion to approve those plans.
Second.
All right, end discussion. I'll make a, not a discussion, but a comment. I didn't even say, thank God we can find a way to show our appreciation to our folks. And that is, I appreciate the work you've done on that, you and Stephanie, she's still here. I think they will appreciate it, and they, it's most, it is very well deserved, and I appreciate it myself. All those in favor, vouch of hands. All right, motion's carried.
May I have just one point of order to say one thing? I know that we brag on Stephanie a lot, and we should, but if it wasn't for her ability to make the numbers work, we couldn't do almost anything that we're doing right now. And the amount of work that Stephanie and her staff are putting out right now to get some things done that nobody understands except us in the central office is nothing short of phenomenal. So, I want to publicly commend them and tell, and tell Stephanie, she knows this, but if she wasn't here, I wouldn't be here. There's not any way that I could do this job. So, Stephanie, thank you. Much appreciated. Has she turned beet red yet?
She got a mask on, I can't tell.
I recommend the Board of Education approve Contract A and B as presented, subject to administrative review and satisfactory compliance. And I have to add those pieces in to meet SER expectations because there's also some, some pieces that will have to be addressed down the road with that. Now, notice, I didn't say Contract C, okay? Because Contract A and B is all that's going to be paid for. At this point, out of SER funding, all right?
Do we have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
End of discussion. All right, all in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
Now, there is a Contract C that has to do with the $22,000 cost to look at the land above the high school. And if you, as a board, want to pursue that, then you can tell us to do that, and then we will, we will look to find the money for that. And it can come from the money that we're recovering off of the Alarca property, okay? So, we will need a motion from you to do that, someone, that you recommend, that you move that we approve Contract C, if that's what you want to do. If not, you just need to let it die.
Well, I think we need to do that simply because that's where our growth is, and we know one of the growth there is gonna be a, the future side of a tract, which not any other place is available. So, I would hope somebody will be able to make a motion on that, that we at least start looking at it.
I think, let's go through the consent agenda first.
And come back to it.
The Alarca property, and then we can.
All right, we can do that. We can do that.
All right, then I'm going to recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including the Alarca property purchase, the calendar adjustment, My Future NC endorsement, and all the minutes for the previous four meetings.
Motion.
Second.
End of discussion. All in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
That moves us through all of the agenda items except for a Contract C, if that's what you want to do.
All right.
I make a motion that we proceed with Contract C regarding the tract of land above the high school, using the purchase money from the Alarca property purchase in order to effectuate that contract.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vouch of hands. Motion's carried.
Okay, those are all of the action items that I have, and just a few FYIs. We are currently working on onsite COVID testing. We have received the opportunity through Department of Public Instruction to put that in place, and they will actually provide funding for us to employ a company to come on site and do that. We could purchase, we could purchase, we could employ, try to employ people, but right now, the employment of medical personnel is very, very difficult, and I don't know that we could, that we could fulfill that. So, Dr. Sutton has recommended to us that we go with a contracted company to come on and do that. Now, we're still in the very early stages of that, but I just want you to know that we're looking at that. That can present some real opportunities for us down the road, onsite testing.
Right.
Okay? Your next meeting, to my understanding, is scheduled for October the 11th. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Do we need to move, change that?
We just wonder if it's a holiday. Isn't it a holiday?
Is that a holiday?
It is.
Do we need to move that then?
That's it, yeah.
We could move it anytime that week if you want to, or we could move it the week before.
Is there school that day?
On the 11th, yes. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, so October the 11th. And Mr. McKinney, I think that's all that we have, unless you want to add something.
I know. I don't know that anybody wanted anything, but I don't think it is. We have a motion to adjourn then.
Finished.
All those in favor, stand up and adjourn.
Thank you.
All right.